Pursuant to Section 84-1411 of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on September 1st, 2017. The meeting will convene at 6:30 PM and visitors may obtain a request to be heard form from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. In accordance with policy, the request to be heard forms must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the board president, so please attend the entire meeting to ensure you're able to hear any discussion.
Pursuant to Section 84-1411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 001, 0001, and the Board of Educational Service Unit Number 19 will be held on Monday, September 18th, 2017 at 6:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 84-1412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Vice President Snowman will lead us in the OPS Vision and Mission Statement.
I'll start with the vision, every student, every day, prepared for success. And the mission, Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college, career, and life.
Roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Cassidy.
Here.
Godding.
Present.
Holman.
Present.
America.
Present.
Pearlman.
Here.
Ryan.
Scanlon.
Present.
Snow.
Here.
Williams.
Present.
Eight present.
All right, Ms. Ryan had let me know that she was not going to be able to make the meeting due to a prior conflict tonight, so I would entertain a motion to excuse her absence.
So move.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Snow and a second by Dr. Holman to excuse the absence of Amanda Ryan. Roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
America.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion approved. We will move on to Item F, which is our OPS Proud Spotlight, and Ms. Monique Palmer.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board, Superintendent Evans. Our OPS Proud Spotlight tonight is on more than 50 schools across the district. During the 2016-2017 school year, OPS was recognized as a Common Sense Digital Citizenship Certified District. Fifty-three schools and programs earn Common Sense School Certification by engaging in and learning more about digital citizenship and literacy. Students have strengthened their digital citizenship skills in focus areas ranging from preventing cyberbullying to understanding their digital footprints and maintaining privacy and security online. This is an important milestone to recognize for our staff, students, and instructional technology team who support our schools. I would now like to welcome Keegan Korf, the Lead Teacher of Digital Citizenship for the District, to the podium to talk a little bit more about the effort.
Digital citizenship is the ability to make safe, smart, ethical decisions online. Members of the Board, it's an honor to stand here tonight recognizing the efforts of over 50 schools in our district. As Omaha Public Schools continues to increase access to technology in our classrooms, it is critical that we're supplementing that access with intentional instruction for online safety. Not only do we need to teach these skills in the classroom, but we also need to support parents and guardians in modeling these efforts at home. Omaha Public Schools uses resources from the nonprofit organization Common Sense Media addressing digital citizenship with a whole community approach. This year, Omaha Public Schools was recognized as a Common Sense Certified District by having 50% of our qualifying schools earning individual certification. These 53 schools represented here today made intentional efforts to integrate digital citizenship lessons alongside their existing curriculum, teaching students to be safe, savvy consumers and creators of media. Students in these schools participated in the process as learners but became teachers by discussing the impacts that media have on their daily lives with the adults in their schools and at home. The students are the champions in this work and we're proud of what they teach us each year. After the spotlight recognition, I invite the schools represented here to join me outside of the boardroom to receive a banner of recognition that you see here to take back to their schools and hang proudly. I am OPS proud to recognize the efforts of the students, teachers, parents, and administrators in this room tonight. Would the members of the audience here representing our 53 Common Sense Schools please stand to be recognized?
Thank you. Yay! This is really awesome. I love seeing you all together in the same place. So, at this time, if you have any questions or if you would like the students that are in the audience to come up for a photo, happy to take any questions before we migrate this way for their banners. Do any Board members have questions? Mr. Scanlon.
So, 53 schools, and I always forget, how many, how many schools do we have? About 90. Okay, so we're over 50%.
Yeah.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, thank you.
And, yeah, I think the students coming up getting a picture would be great.
That'd be awesome, thanks. Any students in the audience, could you please come up for a photo? Yeah, you just, you just stay right here, you guys can hold on to that.
And real quick, once you guys get done taking your picture, we have some OPS Proud pins that we would like to give to you guys for representing our district so proud, so thank you.
Three, two, one. One more time. Three, two, one. Good? Good?
Would anybody like to talk to you? Tell them what you learned?
Yeah, so if, if you guys would, if all you guys go on the other side of the podium and we could have some students like yourselves speak and speak about the experience about the program, that'd be much appreciated.
Did you guys want to talk about it at all?
Hey, you got, everybody.
Wait, you're passing the podium.
Everybody back up here, everybody back up here. You don't get to sit down that easy.
Surprise! Look at how happy they are.
We want to hear from you guys about the program.
So, does anybody want to talk about any lessons that they've done in school regarding Common Sense Media? Maybe digital passport or digital compass? If you will, oh my gosh, thank you.
There we go.
Okay, good evening, everybody. It's nice to be here with you, and I guess I wanted to share last year in my freshman fax class, we were taught about how cyberbullying is actually a serious problem in our society and generally I think it tends to be overlooked, and I think more of our focus is on actual physical bullying and we tend to lose sight on the fact that cyberbullying is a real problem. But fax class did help illuminate that cyberbullying is a problem and it taught us how to be better citizens online. For instance, if someone had posted something that disagrees with your viewpoint, that doesn't mean you should act inappropriately by disregarding whatever they're saying. And I think when people do that, it creates a negative environment for students, because when they meet up at school the next day, they'll be mad at each other and it could result in a fight. But, yeah, I think fax class is working to resolve that as best they can.
Thank you. Mr. Scanlon.
I've got a question for all of you. I have two younger daughters and I'm overwhelmed by the social media stuff. Can you tell me what I could tell my daughters in order to make them more responsible on social media? What, what was advice given to you all in order to make you more responsible on social media and to be kind to one another?
Well, we were given the advice that if they were right in front of you and you were saying the stuff that you were posting online to them right in front of you and you saw their reaction, that you would think about how it would affect them, because when you're online, you don't see their reaction, so they could be crying, they could be angry, but it wouldn't matter to you because you don't know that. And so if you think about how they're actually reacting to what you are saying, then you will post more responsibly than if you aren't.
Okay, if we can have you all, and you too, I see you sitting down over there, we can have you all come around, so we can thank you for being here tonight and give you an OPS Proud pin.
Yes, and if you get two, it's okay, give it to one of your friends.
Thanks, everybody. All right. can stay for the meeting if you want to. We will move on to our Board and Superintendent Communications, and first up is Mr. Evans.
Yes, as everybody walks out, I've seen this before, right before I start speaking, but I'm going to start with something that relates to what we just heard from our students. I'm handing out copies or pictures of the social media high-tech bus that was funded through a grant, and just as a note, as you look at the pictures, this bus, which has been totally renovated and loaded with virtual reality equipment as well as 3D, 3D printers, is also going to be available for Common Sense Media training on PTO nights, on staff nights, and basically it's going to be rotating around among various schools in our district, but the reality is it's going to give us an opportunity to expose, expose parents, expose staff, and expose our students to some, some of the latest technology that there is, and all of it will be including Common Sense Media training. So what we just heard from our students, we're going to have a greater opportunity because of that grant, so thank you, Mr. Dixon and the IT staff for writing the grant and giving us that opportunity. So I wanted to start with that since it related to what our students have. The next thing I'm handing out is the ACT results for our seniors. Now, this document that I'm handing to our school board members, we'll be sending this to the Omaha World Herald this evening, in fact, I think it went late this afternoon, so the same document went to them. This is not the all students, the state required all juniors this year, this is senior participants. This is what the seniors take, so as you look at this, you may notice the number of test takers did go up, 108 test takers, but next year it's going to go from 64% to 98.7%, so nearly 100% for next year with that state-required ACT participation. For the, kind of for the audience who doesn't have this in front of them, we were flat this year, essentially stayed the same, even though we had 102 additional test takers for a total of 1,840, we actually had the same composite as last year, which usually when your test takers go up, your score will go down because you've increased the pool. So we're, we're very glad to see it remaining stable and constant, even though the numbers have gone up, so we are at a 19 composite, and most of our schools went up, we had a couple with some slight decreases of our seven high schools, but as you can see from the document, most went up, so another good year of ACT, and next year will be really interesting when we look at, instead of 64%, which was this last year, it'll be 98% in next year's group of test takers. So the next thing I wanted to do after that, after that piece was just to thank the Omaha Public Schools Foundation, the Council of Great City Schools, President Lacey America for their support of Hurricane Harvey relief. We are in the midst of, if you've not seen it, please look on the Omaha Public Schools website, we've been collecting donations that we're sending down to the Hurricane Harvey victims and the schools particularly down there, which by the way are starting up, I believe, on Monday. So we have, in fact, in my office, some of you may know, that Rhoda Crawford, her daughter is a teacher in Houston, and so she's going back for, she's been up over the weekend here in Omaha, but she's going back to Houston to do teacher training, starting tomorrow, and it starts classes on Monday. But just a whole lot of stories there where folks are putting their lives back together, so thanks to everybody that helped with that. The next thing I wanted to mention again was a reminder that on Friday of this week, we have the Crest Ridge ribbon-cutting activity at 2:00, and just a wonderful time to celebrate with the Crest Ridge family, the wonderful bond construction that's really making a huge difference for the whole community in that school. And also I'd like to remind everyone here that on Wednesday, the 13th, at 6:30, the Nebraska Loves Public Schools Organization is hosting the Seeds of Hope opening movie at the Exarban Theater at 6:30. The Seeds of Hope is about ELL students and immigrant migrant students that we support in Omaha Public Schools as well as the state of Nebraska. I had an opportunity to meet with the producer and actually see the, an early showing, and I will tell you, it is an incredible, incredible movie, so I'd really encourage everyone to go to that, and I think the timing's pretty important, too, as you look at what's happening with DACA and some of those issues, and so I think the timing really plays well, and just in relationship to that, I know there's been some conversations about where public schools are. Our school board has taken a very proactive stance, and we've always said that we don't check on status of our students, we don't check on immigration status, that's never been part of this district, so we'll be sending out a reiteration of that to all of our principals this week, and certainly this movie next week helps reinforce the importance of what we do for all of our young people regardless of the status. And with that, Madam President, that completes my report.
All right, we will move on to Board Member Reports. Are there any Board members that have reports they would like to give or activities they'd like to report about? Okay, Mrs. Cassidy.
Okay, I attended two events since our last board meeting. One was recent today. I went to the first, I believe it would have been the first cross-country meet for middle school students. My oldest daughter is participating, which was a little bit shocking to us, but she did great. We were kind of shocked when she came home and said she wanted to run in cross-country, but she did fantastic, and I'll tell you what, it was, man, that, it was at Buffett, and I should say, that is a tough course. I stood back and was watching these fantastic athletes run, and I was a former cross-country, but Buffett did not exist, thankfully, when I was in cross-country, because that was a tough course. So I might just want to give some kudos out to all of the different schools that participated in that meet today. And then secondly, Lacey and I both attended, was it last Saturday? Two Saturdays ago, I believe, we attended a South Omaha Community Forum, which was an event put on by Senator Tony Vargas, and it was attended by several different, different people that are in our community, gosh, Cara Eastman with the, I'm trying to think of everyone that was there, Metro Board, Roger Garcia, Mike Boyle, Douglas County Commissioner, Minnie Palermo, our city councilman, so it was attended by several of our prominent, primarily South Omaha representatives, and it was a great chance for community members or people in the community to ask questions and kind of have some one-on-one experience with all of us to, to find out, you know, things that they're interested in. So that was a good event. That's it.
Mr. Pearlman, did you have?
Well, I was just going to remind everyone that next week is Open House Week, and so looking forward to visiting a lot of the schools. Starts on Monday with the elementary magnet schools. Tuesday is the middle schools, 6:30 to 8:30, high schools Wednesday, 6:30 to 8:30, and then the elementary schools finish up on Thursday.
Awesome, thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, I do also, as Mr. Evans said, want to thank everyone that has supported the fundraiser that the, our school's foundation is hosting along with our district and the Omaha Education Association, our teachers' union, so thank you to everyone who has supported that. The funds that are being raised to that are going to be given to the Houston Independent School District Foundation, which is actually the sixth-largest school district in the country, and they are one of our counterparts in Council of Great City Schools, and they've said all monies that they raise through their foundation will be given directly to students and staff members of their district that have been affected by Hurricane Harvey, and I hope we do not have to do something similar for the many, many urban districts in Florida, so we're definitely keeping them in our thoughts. Related to Council of Great City Schools, I'm going to pass around the report that we received that goes over the benefits that OPS has received directly from Council of Great City Schools for the 16-17 school year. If you go through it, it lists some of the general things they do, but it also has specific things they've done for Omaha, so like when they came out last fall to help with the transportation audit, and one of the most important things that I do want to highlight publicly is they provide a lot of legislative advocacy for us on a federal level. And so the return on what we paid in membership dues is equivalent in federal funding to $141 of extra federal funding for every dollar we pay in dues that they secure on behalf of our district that we would not have gotten without their efforts. So I think that is, shows that it is a very worthwhile organization for us to belong to, and we receive a lot for the services that they provide to us. All right, we will move on to public comment and recognition. We have, do you have any additional forms? Okay, we have two speakers who have submitted a request to be heard form. The Board has adopted Policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour and limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes, and we ask that you please respect that time limit. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. If you are in need of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know and one will be provided for you. We understand that people have strong feelings about the issues they come to speak about, and we ask that you respect the opinions of all who speak and refrain from applause or other outbursts during presentations. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you please not mention them.
...has been totally renovated and loaded with virtual reality equipment as well as 3D printers is also going to be available for common sense media training on PTO nights, on staff nights, and basically it's going to be rotating around among various schools in our district. But the reality is it's going to give us an opportunity to expose parents, expose staff, and expose our students to some of the latest technology that there is. And all of it will be including common sense media training. So what we just heard from our students, we're going to have a greater opportunity because of that grant. So, thank you, Mr. Dixon and the IT staff for writing the grant and giving us that opportunity. So I wanted to start with that since it related to what our students have. The next thing I'm handing out is the ACT results for our seniors. Now, this document that I'm handing to our school board members, we'll be sending this to the Omaha World Herald this evening. In fact, I think it went late this afternoon. So the same document went to them. This is not the all students. The state required all juniors this year. This is senior participants. This is what the seniors take. So as you look at this, you may notice the number of test takers did go up, 108 test takers, but next year it's going to go from 64% to 98.7%. So nearly 100% for next year with that state required ACT participation. For the, kind of for the audience who doesn't have this in front of them, we were flat this year, essentially stayed the same, even though we had 102 additional test takers for a total of 1,840. We actually had the same composite as last year, which usually when your test takers go up, your score will go down because you've increased the pool. So we're very glad to see it remaining stable and constant, even though the numbers have gone up, so we are at a 19 composite. And most of our schools went up. We had a couple with some slight decreases of our seven high schools, but as you can see from the document, most went up. So another good year of ACT, and next year will be really interesting when we look at, instead of 64%, which was this last year, it'll be 98% in next year's group of test takers. So the next thing I wanted to do after that piece was just to thank the Omaha Public Schools Foundation, the Council of Great City Schools, President Lacy America, for their support of Hurricane Harvey relief. We are in the midst of, if you've not seen it, please look on the Omaha Public Schools website, we've been collecting donations that we're sending down to the Hurricane Harvey victims and the schools particularly down there, which by the way are starting up, I believe, on Monday. So we have, in fact, in my office, some of you may know that Rhoda Crawford, her daughter is a teacher in Houston. And so she's going back for, she's been up over the weekend here in Omaha, but she's going back to Houston to do teacher training, starting tomorrow, and then starts classes on Monday. But just a whole lot of stories there where folks are putting their lives back together. So thanks to everybody that helped with that. The next thing I wanted to mention again was a reminder that on Friday of this week, we have the Crest Ridge ribbon cutting activity at 2:00, and just a wonderful time to celebrate with the Crest Ridge family, the wonderful bond construction that's really making a huge difference for the whole community in that school. And also I'd like to remind everyone here that on Wednesday, the 13th, at 6:30, the Nebraska Loves Public Schools Organization is hosting the Seeds of Hope opening movie at the Exarban Theater at 6:30. The Seeds of Hope is about ELL students and immigrant migrant students that we support in Omaha Public Schools as well as the state of Nebraska. I had an opportunity to meet with the producer and actually see the, an early showing, and I will tell you, it is an incredible, incredible movie. So I'd really encourage everyone to go to that, and I think the timing's pretty important too, as you look at what's happening with DACA and some of those issues. And so I think the timing really plays well. And just in relationship to that, I know there's been some conversations about where public schools are. Our school board has taken a very proactive stance, and we've always said that we don't check on status of our students, we don't check on immigration status. That's never been part of this district. So we'll be sending out a reiteration of that to all of our principals this week. And certainly this movie next week helps reinforce the importance of what we do for all of our young people regardless of the status. And with that, Madam President, that completes my report.
All right. We'll move on to board member reports. Are there any board members that have reports they would like to give or activities they'd like to report about? Mrs. Cassidy?
Okay. I attended two events since our last board meeting. One was recent today. I went to the first, I believe it would have been the first cross-country meet for middle school students. My oldest daughter is participating, which was a little bit shocking to us, but she did great. We were kind of shocked when she came home and said she wanted to run in cross-country, but she did fantastic. And I'll tell you what, it was, man, that, it was at Buffett, and I should say, that is a tough course. I stood back and was watching these fantastic athletes run, and I was a former cross-country, but Buffett did not exist, thankfully, when I was in cross-country because that was a tough course. So I might just want to give some kudos out to all of the different schools that participated in that meet today. And then secondly, Lacy and I both attended, was it last Saturday? Two Saturdays ago, I believe. We attended a South Omaha Community Forum, which was an event put on by Senator Tony Vargas, and it was attended by several different people that are in our community. Gosh, Kara Eastman with the, I'm trying to think of everyone that was there, Metro Board, Roger Garcia, Mike Boyle, Douglas County Commissioner, Minnie Palermo, our city councilman. So it was attended by several of our prominent, primarily South Omaha representatives, and it was a great chance for community members or people in the community to ask questions and kind of have some one-on-one experience with all of us to find out, you know, things that they're interested in. So that was a good event. That's it.
Mr. Pearlman, did you have?
Well, I was just going to remind everyone that next week is Open House Week, and so looking forward to visiting a lot of the schools. Starts on Monday with the elementary magnet schools. Tuesday is the middle schools, 6:30 to 8:30. High schools, Wednesday, 6:30 to 8:30. And then the elementary schools finish up on Thursday.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay. I do also, as Mr. Evans said, want to thank everyone that has supported the fundraiser that the, our school's foundation is hosting along with our district and the Omaha Education Association, our teachers' union. So thank you to everyone who has supported that. The funds that are being raised to that are going to be given to the Houston Independent School District Foundation, which is actually the sixth largest school district in the country. And they are one of our counterparts in Council of Great City Schools, and they've said all monies that they raise through their foundation will be given directly to students and staff members of their district that have been affected by Hurricane Harvey. And I hope we do not have to do something similar for the many, many urban districts in Florida. So we're definitely keeping them in our thoughts. Related to Council of Great City Schools, I'm going to pass around the report that we received that goes over the benefits that OPS has received directly from Council of Great City Schools for the 16-17 school year. If you go through it, it lists some of the general things they do, but it also has specific things they've done for Omaha. So like when they came out last fall to help with the transportation audit. And one of the most important things that I do want to highlight publicly is they provide a lot of legislative advocacy for us on a federal level. And so the return on what we paid in membership dues is equivalent in federal funding to $141 of extra federal funding for every dollar we pay in dues that they secure on behalf of our district that we would not have gotten without their efforts. So I think that is, shows that it is a very worthwhile organization for us to belong to, and we receive a lot for the services that they provide to us. All right. We will move on to public comment and recognition. We have, do you have any additional forms? Okay. We have two speakers who have submitted requests to be heard for. The board has adopted Policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour and limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes, and we ask that you please respect that time limit. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. If you are in need of interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know, and one will be provided for you. We understand that people have strong feelings about the issues they come to speak about, and we ask that you respect the opinions of all who speak and refrain from applause or other outbursts during presentations. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you please not mention them by name and provide that information to Mr. Ray. If you would like to submit a written copy of your commentary, please also give that to Mr. Ray, and he will distribute it to the board. As a reminder, we ask that you please spell your name and state your address before you begin your public comment. Our first speaker tonight is Christina Simeone.
Thank you very much. My name is Christina Simeone, K-R-I-S-T-I-N-A, Simeone, S-I-M-E-O-N-E. I live at 14108 Sprague Street. So first, I'd like to welcome the new board members. Thank you all for your service. We really appreciate everything that you do. Today, I'd like to emphasize the urgency of moving the second bond forward. Many families, I know, were impressed by the first bond's productivity and fiscal responsibility. We were ready to vote yes on the second bond in May 2017, knowing that the first bond was just the first phase of a two-phase process, and that the second phase was going to resolve a lot of the overcrowding issues within OPS. And we were all shocked and disappointed when it did not come through or come out in May 2017. And overcrowding is now an urgent issue more than ever, and it really needs to be addressed. Frankly, we don't have enough seats to educate our children. We have schools over capacity. Highland Elementary, I believe, is around 196% rated capacity. If children didn't opt out, it'd be around 220%. I believe Pawnee Elementary is around 140% capacity. Portables are supposed to be the temporary classrooms, and unfortunately, we have about 240 portables. And with the second bond moving forward, it would substantially relieve these portables. We are losing kids to other districts at an accelerated rate due to the overcrowding. We have family, friends, that my boys have known since they were two years old that have recently moved to a less crowded district because they were worried that things were not moving forward as expeditiously as anticipated, and they were worried that perhaps this overcrowding would actually with OPS would get worse. So my story is only one of many stories. My understanding is that it's approximately just under 4,000 middle and high school students that opt out of OPS, and that might be from information that I have access to, about $31 million a year opting out of OPS. It's my understanding that we are on track, or we could be on track, to have a second bond out for Fall 2017. I know it takes a lot of collaborative effort on many levels, and I am ready to help, and so many other individuals I know are ready to help get this out and move it forward. My understanding, again, from the information that I have access to, I think there's three major things that need to be done within about 60 days. I think these are actionable items that potentially could be done, assuming that I have all the information. I believe that the first thing that needs to be done is board leadership needs to put out numbers for the second bond. Board leadership needs to give authority to the steering committee to poll and advertise, and then we need to have two public hearings. To address that first point, just a little bit more specifically, as far as the board leadership putting out the numbers for the second bond, we know that there's a list of projects that was determined and put out in 2014 for Phase II projects, and we know that this list was further refined with the DRL study in November of 2016, which was last year. So I know that you know the projects and the prices. It seems that there was a board workshop in June, early June 2017. We would all really like to see a current list of the projects and the numbers to be included in the Phase II bond. We don't really know what the reason is for any delay on this. We would really appreciate that information. Then the second thing, like I said, give the authority to the steering committee to poll and advertise, to start communicating with the public what the second bond could be about, would be about. And then there's two public hearings, and I think this can be accomplished for Fall 2017, and many other individuals would really appreciate it if it was. Advantages of the fall is you can take advantage of lower interest rates in November and add construction opportunity, another construction opportunity for Spring 2018. I just wanted to conclude with how much I love OPS and how much my family loves OPS. I love the teachers, I love the staff, I love the students, and I am most proud of my boys and the men, the young men that they are turning out to be. I have, I love how, not only my sons, but the friends of my son, they don't just take care of each other, they step up.
One minute.
And they, they take care of others. So they don't just care for each other, they take care of others. And this behavior isn't considered remarkable, it's just considered simply normal in OPS. I love the silly and the goofy things that the teachers allow themselves to do and be at carnivals and school functions. It brings so much joy to the families and frankly, to learning. I absolutely love OPS, and so many of us want to stay in OPS. We just want this overcrowding issue to be resolved as soon as possible because we don't want it to negatively influence OPS. According to the mission, it's every student. I think it's our responsibility to step up and live up to the mission. It's every student. We need to provide them the educational infrastructure to support the needs of the number of students that we have here in OPS. Families are ready to vote. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Our second speaker tonight is Alex Gates.
Good evening. My name is Alex Gates, G-A-T-E-S. I live at 2612 North 97th Avenue. I'm in Subdistrict 3. I'm here tonight to show my support for and encourage the board to bring a second-phase bond before the community for a vote. I support a second bond because our community is changing, neighborhoods are growing, and many schools across the district are too small to meet the needs of our students. I believe we are doing a disservice to our students, teachers, and community by relying on portable units to handle overflow in our schools. The fact is, portables are simply not as safe as regular classrooms, and they cut students and teachers off from the school community as a whole. We need school buildings with enough room to offer sensible class sizes without squeezing every inch away from other programs. Like many of you, I've seen offices in OPS that were once closets. I've seen backstage areas filled with desks because there simply wasn't enough room anywhere else. I've seen music teachers and art teachers wheel carts from classroom to classroom because there's simply no room for a music room or an art room in a school. Our students deserve better, every student, every day. Given the current economic conditions and the unforeseen funding shortfalls, I'm concerned there will be an effort to ignore elements from the original needs assessment and focus only on new construction for high schools. It's important to remind the board that this first phase of the bond was sold to the community with a second phase in mind. In fact, before the vote in 2014, a representative from Jacobs visited our PTA at Edison and explained where Edison fit in the second phase of the bond. When parents questioned why it was important to support the 2014 bond since we wouldn't see major renovation, we were told that we must pass the first phase in order to see significant renovation in the second phase. I'm urging you to remember those commitments that you made to our community and support a full bond in Phase II. Please don't ignore the original needs assessment. Now finally, with regard to timing, it's clear there's a movement by some to push for an accelerated timeline and hold a special election in November. I understand the arguments about interest rates, but I believe this approach is shortsighted and potentially catastrophic for our community and the school district. As a board, you're making strides to rebuild public trust from a rocky start. A special election, mail-in vote only two months from now will be perceived as a sneaky attempt to disenfranchise voters and raise property taxes. All the work you've done to rebuild community trust would unravel. We need time to win the hearts and the minds of the community so we can proudly, transparently, and fairly pass a bond issue to support the school, district, students, teachers, and city that we love. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. We will move on to item I, which is our consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So move.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Snow and a second by Dr. Holman to approve the consent agenda. Are there any abstentions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Eight, aye.
Motion passes. We will move on. You may have noticed that we are trying something new tonight, and we are doing action items followed by discussion, followed by information items. So we will go on to J1, which is our action item. And first up is J1A, approval of Douglas County School District 0001, 2017-2018 budgets, which do not require a tax levy. And I believe Ms. Kenoki will give us an update from our budget workshop that we held previously.
Do you just want the first presentation?
Yeah. I'm going to do the general fund first and then have him do all the stuff and then do the other.
Who do you want? This one? Here. So you'd have to move it here.
Okay.
No. Do you want one? I can get you one.
No.
Okay. Is that good?
Yeah.
So move it right here.
Okay. President America, Vice President Snow, members of the board, Superintendent Evans, I would like to go over some of the changes that have happened to our budget since we did our budget hearing last month. But first, I would like to address some of the questions that we had during the budget hearing. And the question was how much cash we have on hand as of August 31st, what we've collected so far from the county. And we're on an accrual basis of accounting, and our accounting office is in the process of closing the books, so I will get that information for them. But what we're talking about tonight is the budget and not the actual revenues and expenditures. We get audited every year, and our auditors are coming in in September, toward the end of September. So we're preparing for all of that, and I will have that information available. The other question is, you know, how much, what is cash that we have on hand and the cash equivalents? And when we adopt our budget, last year we had a $582 million general fund budget. And so the cash on hand is from last year, what we've done on our budget, what's left over, and what we've paid. And so it's still kind of in flux, but I did give the ladies my business card, and I would be happy to answer any of the questions that they have if they wanted to go more into depth about that. So if you look at the budget materials that I have that were online, again, I'd like to reiterate that we do have open book where you can go online, and it's on the OPS webpage, the homepage. And in the lower left-hand corner, you click on that, and you can look at all of the detail for all of the departments and all of the expenses and so forth. And also, I'd like to mention that we have a document called Budget at a Glance that was part of the attachment that you have. And in the back of the room, we have copies of that if anybody here would like to look at the Budget at a Glance, which is basically just a summary of everything that we've done. It's just another way of saying it. So in the budget hearing presentation, if you go to slide number four, you'll see something that wasn't in our budget workshop, which is actually the last year's, I can't get this to go. It was last year's proposed budget, and it shows you that our total, slide number four, shows you that our total valuation for the district was $20 billion. Our total tax asking was $282 million, and our state aid was $226 million. Our total levy last year was $1.24. So then when I go on to look at slide number five in your handouts, you can see what the 17-18 budget is, comparing the difference. And where our valuation was 20 billion, now it's 21 billion. So it's a 4% increase from last year to this year. When we did our budget workshop last year, or last month, we were projecting a 2% increase. So it's actually higher than what we had expected. And that increase in the valuation was about $5 million. So then that changed how much cash we had to use from our fund balance to balance the budget, because whenever you adopt a budget, you have to have your revenues equal your expenditures, and we needed to use some of our fund balance to balance our budget. So then if you move on to slide number 15, this is where you'll see the difference between what we had used in the workshop compared to what it is now, because we had the assessed valuations certified by the county assessor on August 20th. So that's where we moved from our estimate of a 2% increase to an estimate of a 4% increase. So the estimated budget went from $217 million in taxes to $222 million. Moving on then, if you go to slide number 19, when we did our workshop, we were estimating we'd have to use $14.5 million of our fund balance, and we're only actually having to use $9.4 million. And again, that's because of the increase in the valuation that came in higher than what we had expected, which ended up being a good thing, I guess. There were a few minor changes in buildings because after we did the budget workshop, schools started and we needed to hire staff for student growth and for areas that had some changes. So there were slight changes in the buildings for increases for staffing. But otherwise, much of the budget, the total expenditures remains the same, and then our revenues were slightly higher than we expected. So that's just a brief summary of the budget, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any board members with questions related to budget? Mr. Scanlon.
I think we've talked about it, but I guess just to reiterate it, what's our biggest expenditures as a district?
Salaries and benefits. We're 85% salaries and benefits for the whole district. The rest of it is operations like buildings and grounds, accounts payable, accounts receivable, just the running of the business of the district. So 85% of it is salaries and benefits.
And with that being the largest expenditure being salaries, I guess, could you remind the public what we agreed to, to increase salaries for teachers which were below kind of the regional fair market value?
Right. We had a three-year negotiated agreement with our teachers, and this is the third year of the three-year agreement, and they received an overall package increase of 5.5%, which was about $13 million, $13, $14 million of our total $26 million increase was for the benefits for the salary and the benefits for the teachers.
And that was to be more competitive with
Yes.
neighboring or comparative school districts? So were you surprised that the increase of, I think you said 4%?
4% in valuation, yes.
Okay. Were you surprised by that, or were you expecting that due to the increase in salaries?
Well, what I was, when I was projecting, I looked in the historical valuation increases. So I went back 10 years just to see what the average increases had been, and that's what I used in my projections. But there was a revaluation going on in Douglas County, and I knew that there were some properties that had valuations that increased, some had them that decreased. So I wasn't quite sure how that was going to go. And generally, when you're developing a budget, it's best to underestimate your revenues because if you overestimate them, then you have to come in at a time like this and then start making cuts to try to get the budget to balance. And so it was nice that we didn't have to use as much cash on hand as what we had projected. So it helped our fund balance by doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kenoki. One question I have is where are the funds coming from to make the annual required contribution that I believe started this year?
That's coming, that's, it's built into this budget, that payment that we're having to make. And so it's coming from the cash on hand, that $9.4 million that we had to draw down from our fund balance, that's being used to pay for the ARC.
Okay. And is there enough cash on hand to make next year's ARC?
Well, that depends. I mean, we are going to be working with the legislature to try to help us I mean, we are going to be working with the legislature to try to help us fund our unfunded liability as we move forward. You know, depending how all of that works out, we won't be able to come up with, you know, $12 million every year to make those payments. So if that is something that we're going to have to find money for, then we're going to have to make some changes as we go forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Scanlon?
So again, being 85% of our budget is salaries. If the legislature is not able to work with us, we would probably have to go into personnel cuts?
Yes, and some of our benefits that we have for our employees, we may have to reduce benefits that are paid to them and there may not be increases that happen in the future for salaries like this year where we have the negotiated agreement for our teachers going up 5.5%. Maybe it'd be 0% or 1%, something like that. If you've looked in the paper to see what other districts are doing, in some cases, they're having minimal increases to keep their budgets down and everybody is feeling, you know, the hurt, I guess, the pressure as we go forward to be more efficient and to try to save money.
I guess just asking the superintendent, with your experience, from what I've gained in my short period of time, that in an urban school district, you need quite a bit more personnel per student in order to deal with a lot of challenging issues that you might not have in a suburban district. Is that fair to say?
I think that'd be very fair to say. But and I would also add, we have evidence of the impact of state cuts really across the metro area. I believe Westside's going for an override of 15 cents on a November ballot and Millard is looking at one. I'm not sure the timeline of when that vote would occur. So some of the same challenges, but you're right, when we're filling gaps that other districts don't always have to fill, where we're providing lower class size and other supports because we're filling gaps in some high-need schools. But the challenge for me is those changes we've made to fill some of those gaps are paying off. And we've got student achievement going up, we're moving the needle in some of the schools that the state had previously said were persistent low-achieving schools. So it is a tug and pull on trying to figure out if, depending on what happens legislatively, if we have to come together and do a major budget cutting committee that includes district staff, some community leaders to really look at if we have to slice something, where might that slice come from and where would it have the least impact on our students? So I think we could be, depending on what happens legislatively, we could head that direction. We don't know definitively until we see what happens with revenue projections at the state level, what happens with some of the requests that we'll have to support some of our financial needs.
And one thing I'd also like to mention, some of the things that changed from when we did our budget workshop to now was special ed services, where you have children that move into the district that have needs that we have to address at the buildings that we didn't know at the time the budget was developed. So you're filling those gaps. And generally, what happens with a large metro school district is that becomes kind of a magnet for children that have special needs because of the facilities and the doctors and whatever that are available. And so that always becomes a cost that's, you know, increasing every year, that you can't always anticipate who's going to come, what their needs are going to be or any of those things. So that is another factor we have to consider as well.
Thank you. I appreciate everything that goes into figuring out our budget and our personnel and everything. Thank you.
And I do have one quick question. And you may not know this off the top of your head, that's okay. Do you by chance know what percentage of our valuation base is currently under TIF?
No, I don't know that, but I can get that for you.
Okay. Because I think that that also, in our case as an urban district, it makes a huge difference because we do have some very large TIF designations in our district that are not valued based on their current value. They're based on the original value when construction was started, which hopefully some of them will be coming off of TIF in the near future.
And you know what? Another thing with the district is most urban districts aren't seeing the growth that we see in our student population and the valuation growth of the districts. So we're really financially sound and we're growing, but the, you know, the pension liability is a concern and that's something that, you know, is being addressed and we're aggressively looking at that. But, you know, as far as the operations of the district, we're on, we're very conservative. There are some districts that are suffering and really struggling, but we're, we've been conservative and we try to do a good job keeping track of our expenses and our revenues and just keeping things in check.
Mr. Pearlman?
No, I just thought of a question. From your experience, I don't know if you've ever been doing budget work while the state has faced such a significant shortfall. If you have, could you maybe give us your best estimate? I know the factors are really unlimited, unlimited, the variables that go into what may happen two years, four years, six years down the line. But is there any historical perspective you can give us to maybe shed some light on what impact there may be on state funding for OPS as best you can, even considering all those variables in a downturn like we're seeing?
Yeah, I've been around the state funding for a long time and I've seen budgets for schools for a long time. So I can tell you districts that have a lot of valuation. In OPS, for example, 47% of our revenue comes from the state and then the rest of it is mostly from our property taxes. And we get a lot of state aid because of the needs of our children that we have attending our district. You know, there's poverty, that's a factor. And then English language learners, that's a factor and special education and transportation of the students and all of those things. Our value does not tend to increase very often. It's unusual to get a 4% increase like we did this year. I'm not sure that that's something we can anticipate for next year or not. So in the state aid formula, they look at what your valuation is and a lot of the districts across the state have AGLND, which has double-digit increases or whatever. And so that's impacted how much state aid they receive more than it impacts us because our value doesn't change as much, but our needs continue to grow. So I'm hopeful that any cuts that happen, if that should happen next year, that we would at least remain the same and not go backwards. And we are unique compared to other districts in the metro area because of the needs of our students and that is recognized in the current state aid formula. The only thing would be if they came out with a whole new formula that changed everything, then I don't know where we'd be. I mean, I haven't seen something like that happen. Generally, what they do when they change the state aid formulas, they have hearings and they do printouts and they kind of have input from the districts. But again, this is a new legislature and they may look at it differently. But, you know, I think, based on my experience, what I've seen in the past, I think that we would hold steady, hopefully get an increase in state aid because of increasing our needs. So I think we would be all right state aid-wise.
Okay. Any other board questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion on J1A.
I move to adopt the resolution before you to approve the 2017-18 non-levy budgets for Douglas County School District 0001, which includes the following: School Lunch, $41,452,438; School Activities, $6,500,000; Central Stores, $5,500,000; Depreciation, $5 million; Employee Benefit, $11,100,000; Student Fees, $800,000; Contingency, $11 million; Cooperative, $43 million; Prior Service Retirement, $145,000.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a motion by Mrs. Gadding and a second by Mr. Snow. Roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Gadding?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Pearlman?
Aye.
Eate?
Aye.
Motion passes. We will move on to item J1B, which is approval of Douglas County School District 0001 2017-2018 budgets, which require a levy excluding general fund.
I move to adopt the resolution before you to approve the 2017-18 Douglas County School District 0001 budgets, which require a tax levy excluding the general fund as follows. Bond Fund, $73,972,340; Special Building Fund, $238,467,312; Qualified Capital Purpose Undertaking Fund, $7,648,990.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Gadding and a second by Ms. Williams. Mr. Scanlon?
Connie, could you just explain the difference between what we just approved and what this is for the public and for all of the board members?
I believe what you're looking at is the tax levies that we have for each of our funds. So our total tax asking that we're asking you to approve would be $1.25. Last year was $1.24. We increased it by a penny because of the next tranche of the bond issue. So we had expected a 5 cent increase with the bond issue that we had last time. So we're in, on track to meet that. Our general fund levy, we're limited under law to $1.5 maximum levy. And then we do have an exclusion for early leave incentive and this will be the last year that we get that exclusion. They made some changes in the legislature to that. So our total general fund levy is $1.6 because of the early leave incentive. And then we have the bond fund levy of 16 cents and then the qualified capital purpose levy of 2 cents. So that makes up our $1.25.
So the levy doesn't apply to our entire budget, it just applies to certain specific?
Yes, it only applies to the taxing funds because we have a, you know, we have a federal fund, we have a nutrition services fund. Those funds don't get tax dollars and we don't levy on those funds. But on these, on the general fund, the qualified capital purpose fund and the bond fund, we do levy for those. And that's what makes up our maximum levy.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, just because there's some other school districts that are increasing their levy and doing different things that
Yeah.
Gets a little confusing sometimes.
Yep, and I'll say that we have the four separate budget motions we have to approve, like Mrs. Kanoki said, the budgets that don't have any tax levies, like your nutrition services. The budgets that essentially, I see them as like a special levy, which is your bond levy, the special building fund and qualified capital purpose undertaking, also known as QC puff, because those are separate from our general fund levy. Then we'll approve our general fund budget, which is your main $1.5 levy. And then since we also, OPS has its own ESU, we approve the ESU budget. And then the last two items will be the actual approval of the property tax request for those two.
And the reason you approve non-levy funds is you're giving us the authority to spend the money. You know, like in the nutrition services funds, we can't spend any of the money without board approval. So that's what we're asking you to do tonight is approve what we're anticipating our expenditures to be for the year coming up. And to make the, to be able to spend all that we need to for the general fund, we have to levy property tax dollars because through state aid and federal sources, we're not getting enough to operate. So we need the additional levy that we get from taxes to pay for all of our expenses in the general fund and the bond fund and then also in the qualified capital purpose fund.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, we have a motion on the floor that was made by Mrs. Gadding and seconded by Ms. Williams. Roll call, please.
Snow?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Gadding?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Pearlman?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Eate?
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll move on to J1C, which is approval of the 2017-2018 general fund budget for Douglas County School District 0001.
I move to adopt the resolution before you to approve a 2017-2018 general fund local budget in the amount of $608,843,809 and a reimbursable grant budget in the amount of $89,450,000 for a total general fund budget of $698,293,809.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Gadding and a second by Dr. Holman. Is there any discussion? Mr. Scanlon?
I just, I mean, the reason I'm asking some of the questions is because there's a lot of money going on.
Yeah.
You know? And that is, I think, what we get as a school district, a lot of attention. Can you just briefly talk about the amount that we get from the state legislature, from tax dollars, and then also the generous amount that we get from grants that add to the total but that are not taxpayer dollars?
Right, we have a strong philanthropic community and they, they give generously to OPS to do a lot of programs that we're not able to afford to do with just our tax revenues and state aid. We get about $23 million from private donors to the district for programs for our students. And then we, we are budgeting to receive, I think it's, we're budgeting to receive $608 million from the general fund. And in property taxes, it's about $222 million that we're getting from property taxes. And then we also get money for special education from the state through grants. That makes up the rest of that. That pays for a portion of what we pay for special education, but it does not pay for the whole cost of it. So our district general funds pay for that as well. So those are our only sources of revenue would be our federal funds, our state funds and what we can raise locally with property taxes. And then when we get donations from our philanthropic groups, that helps us do some additional programs for our students that desperately need those programs as well.
No, I would just like to thank the philanthropical community and the Omaha community for all the grants that they give. They're very generous and it allows us to do quite a bit with our students that we would not be able to do without their generosity.
I have not seen this in any other district. The support that we receive from the community is amazing.
Seeing, Mr. Pearlman?
I would like to echo Mr. Scanlon's comments there as it relates to philanthropic support. It is amazing. It does allow the district to do some amazing things that we would otherwise not be able to do. I would urge the board and the administration to begin planning for, for the challenges that we face. We face extreme challenges. The last time we've seen a budget shortfall like this, it's been a while, combined with the pension shortfall. I feel like now's the time to plan, not when we are up against it. I think that would be too late to begin those discussions. So I would urge us to look at the things that we can do at a pragmatic level to make sure that the impacts are as minimal as they can be. Because there's only one certainty and that is that the challenges that we face now are probably as high as they've ever been. And I do recognize, and it is important to repeat, that the challenges that this district has are as high as any other.
Absolutely, yeah.
And our district meets it very well. But, that does not take away from the fact that we have circumstances that are out of our control that we need to deal with, and I think we need to deal with them right away.
And I don't want to speak for Mrs. Kenoke, but correct me if I'm wrong. We begin the budgeting, we will begin the budgeting process for the eighteen, nineteen school year within the next few weeks or so.
Yes, we will begin that probably in November. And we will look at all of the different options. We'll also be looking at legislation. We're working with the retirement committee and different groups. And we are definitely monitoring what's going on at the legislature. And like I said, we've really got some good, good people here that are doing a good job managing our funds and monitoring them. And we have already started planning, trying to make some decisions. So, we know that it's going to be very tough going forward.
Mrs. Gadding.
And I just wanted to add that the budget committee is ready to start working on that. I've had conversations with Mrs. Kenoke. And we'll definitely be taking a look at things and we'll probably know more in the next three months.
Yeah.
I would guess. We'll have a lot more information three months from now. And I think what we do know is that the state, because of commodity prices, will not be seeing a revenue surplus anytime soon. And the commodity prices probably more than drive, more than they drive income tax, they significantly drive sales tax. And so, I think that's a challenge that the state of Nebraska has and we'll be aware of that. But, I think we've been very fortunate, as you said, that because of our high need, we've historically been able to see.
Right.
The revenues come in. And so, I think that we have the benefit there. But, as far as the pension goes, we recognize that there's challenges there and we'll work legislatively and through the budget committee, bringing things to the board to make decisions as we move forward.
I will say, across the country, the pension is not, it's an issue for everybody. It's not just unique to OPS. It's something that's happening across the country and that is something that does need to be monitored and dealt with, so.
All right, seeing no further questions, we have a motion by Mrs. Gadding and luckily the second was by Dr. Holman. So, roll call, please. Mr. Ray.
Williams.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Eate.
Aye.
All right, we will move on to J-1D, which is approval of the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen budget for educational service unit number nineteen.
I move to adopt the resolution before us to approve the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen ESU number nineteen budget of twenty-nine million, fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Gadding and a second by Ms. Williams. Is there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Eate.
Motion passes. We will move on to J-1E, which is approval of twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen property tax request for Douglas County School District 0001.
I move to adopt the resolution before us to set the two thousand seventeen, eighteen Douglas County School District 0001 property tax request as follows. General fund, two hundred and twenty-four million, five hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. Special building fund, zero dollars. Qualified capital purpose undertaking fund, five million, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Bond fund, thirty-four million, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Total property tax requirement, two hundred and sixty-four million, four hundred and six thousand, thirty-eight dollars.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Gadding and a second by Ms. Williams. Are there any board comments or discussion? I do, I think I've mentioned this at every budget hearing we've had, just want to point out for the public's awareness that this is the first year that there's not a separate school district levy and learning community levy. So, when you receive your property tax statements next year, it will look different because those things that were previously separated out into two numbers will be combined into one again, like they were prior to the learning community. Okay, seeing no further discussion, roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Gadding.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Eate.
Aye.
Motion passes. We will move on to J-1F, approval of the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen property tax request for educational service unit number nineteen.
I move to adopt the resolution before us to set the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen ESU number nineteen property tax request at three million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Gadding and a second by Ms. Williams. Any board questions or discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Holman.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
Eate.
Aye.
Motion passes. We have made it through all the budget. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kenoke and your staff for the amazing work that you do. I know it's, it's a very stressful process and season, especially when we're doing the preliminary budgets, but don't get final property valuations until the end of August and then there's a mad dash to finish things off so we can approve it at this meeting. So, thank you. And also, thank you, Mrs. Gadding and the budget committee for all of your work over this year, getting this budget ready to bring to us for approval tonight as well. We will move on to our information items. And first up is Vice President Snow and the Superintendent Search Committee update.
Our, just a quick update. If you look on the consent agenda, we, the board passed the contract for Rain Associates. And this Thursday, the committee will be meeting to discuss timeline and also the search with Rain Associates. So, right now, we are ahead of schedule. And I do believe by the time we come back, we'll have some rough timelines to have a discussion at the full board table. Any questions?
All right, we look forward to your update at our next meeting. We will move on to J-2B, which is the strategic plan update.
Madam President, as they prepare the presentation, just a couple of notes. The process that they're going to describe, and they're going to do it very briefly today and kind of hit the high points of which we do have, I believe we've sent the electronic copy of the full strategic plan to our school board. We're welcome to provide that in hard copy as well, if there's any board members that would like a copy of it. For the benefit of our newer board members, just as a point of reference, this process was started in two thousand thirteen. And the process started with the support of some foundations, as well as the Omaha Chamber of Commerce, which actually brought in a third party to do a very in-depth needs analysis of our entire district. And then, after the needs analysis, did a area-by-area canvassing of our entire district, gathering information from parents, students, staff. And then, all of that was brought back to the school board and then processed with the school board in multiple ways. And then, finally, an adopted strategic plan, five-year strategic plan was completed, I believe, in the fall of two thousand fourteen. And so, we are next year, this next year will be the fifth year of a five-year plan. So, the timing is kind of right to do a revision, which usually in five years you do a revision. And so, the timing will be, will be absolutely correct and right to do that with a new superintendent next year. So, and I would just make one last comment before I turn it over to Scott is the picture that he shows there, I actually have this in my office, and Jeff Katerba, the editorial cartoonist, signed that for me. I've got it framed because the reality is, in a strategic plan, this is just a great picture of what it really is. It does define goals, it does define specific areas of priorities. But, at the end of the day, the real work is what are you doing to meet those goals? And the real work is looking at data to see, are you making progress? And that's always the goal, is demonstrating that you're making progress. So, I would remind the board that we've never forgotten that, and I think tonight we'll get a brief on that. But, part of the work that you hear about so often, whether it's what we're doing with PLOF schools, what we're doing with technology, what we're doing to enhance safety and equity in our district, even the facility needs that we've heard about tonight, and certainly the facility needs that we passed in the two thousand fourteen bond issue, all of that relates to the strategic plan because those were the big targets that were picked out. The student assignment plan was picked out in the strategic plan. There's a whole list of things. So, I just want to applaud all the current board members, as well as the previous board members that approved this, that without that roadmap, then we wouldn't be where we are today. So, I just give that as a quick overview before we kind of walk through some of the big picture of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans, and good evening. I'm here to speak with you, as well as with Mr. Sharif Lwaru, the Director of our Office of Equity and Diversity. For the sake of consistency, I'll work through the presentation and then we'll both be available for questions. Okay, so, Mr. Evans talked through some of the components that led to the development of the plan, the partnerships, et cetera. And we're going to talk a little bit now about some of the fundamental pieces of the strategic plan. Mr. Evans is exactly right. A strategic plan is not the work, it's the outcomes and the path, the roadmap, if you will, of the work. So, today, we're going to talk first a bit about some of the components and then get into how work is progressing on those prioritized strategies, which are those strategies identified as needing to be addressed first. And so, unpacking a strategic plan a little bit, we see some components here. Starting at the highest level, you have the vision that we repeat prior to this meeting every time. And that's the highest-level aspirational goal of the district, that we return for every student, every day, a preparation for success in their future life. The mission statement further defines and articulates what this vision really entails. And here, we have an action, so the preparation of students, as we, Omaha Public Schools, prepare all students to excel in college career and life, as well as a target for those preparations, all students, not a specific grouping of students, but all students, as well as the intended outcome of our efforts. And that is that those students will be able to and will be prepared to excel in college career and life. And you'll see these kinds of themes, be it the action of preparation, the target of our efforts, or the outcomes we expect, reverberate through the scorecard that you're familiar with, where we will come back to you in several months to show you how we're meeting those high-level goals of the strategic plan. But, it is through this work that we approach those goals and attempt to meet them with our efforts. So, going further from that, we find the principles. And these are those targeted areas of work that are necessary to improve the preparations of students, to ensure the outcomes for all students that we intend to. And they allow us to complete our mission and to live our vision. Looking at it a little bit lower lens, so within the principles, of which there are seven, we have objectives or goals. And these define, much in the way a mission further defines a vision, our objectives or goals add a little more complexity or context, if you will, to the principles. Talking about those steps or tasks necessary for achieving a principle. We also have levels of measurement within this work. And this is a level of measurement to guide those individuals who are charged with undertaking a given strategy or a series of strategies. So, that's kind of a lower level of measure, measurement. It's much more in the weeds, if you will, than what we see on the scorecard, which are those high-level metrics that we show to you and discuss in these meetings. And so, that is a bit of a lower level. If you look at the lowest increment of effort within the strategic plan, we find the strategies. And these are those specific one hundred and fifty-six tasks identified in the strategic plan as necessary to meet our objectives or goals for the strategic plan. Of those strategies, there are some that were prioritized by the board. Many of you were involved in that process, as well as some of your predecessors. And these are those strategies that the board and district leadership identified as needing to be addressed first, to help us move forward in some critical areas that you were hearing from your constituents and others. Okay, switching gears a little bit, we'll start reviewing the progress that we've been able to realize on these prioritized strategies. As part of this presentation, you'll see that we'll begin with what I would call a bumper slide that just kind of reviews what a guiding principle is, that we're going to talk about the completion of the strategies within, as well as an example of the goal for that strategy, or principle, rather. Principles generally have more than one goal. I think the lowest number of goals we have within a principle are two. And you can find those on pages fourteen and fifteen of your strategic plan, where all the goals are listed. And I do want to thank our friends in district communications. They provided these bumper slides and you will likely be seeing them coming to a social media campaign in the future. I think they do a great job capturing not only the guiding principles, but an example of some of those goals within this area of work, the progress we've made, and some laudatory outcomes when we have some to share relative to this work. So, first, looking at guiding principle number one, safe and healthy and engaged students. We find our first goal, that students are empowered to be active participants in their educational success. And some of the work that we've seen here is developments around the virtual school, which will be expanded to ninth grade this year, as well as efforts in our career center to ensure that students are coming out of school with a competitive advantage in industry certifications. Work in this area is progressing nicely. We see that there were three prioritized strategies associated with this area of work. And just to, as an aside, discuss the handout for a moment, what you'll see in the slideshow presentation is an aggregation of all those strategies, so three strategies, and how we've progressed on that work. Within the handout, we've disaggregate them so you can see specifically for these efforts and how we've been able to work towards them, how that work is going for a specific strategy, if you have interest in that. You'll also see on these slides, there are listed associated activities or projects. Those who were asked to do this work, to approach a strategy, those individuals or groups of individuals were able to chunk the work, if you will, into smaller sections, projects, et cetera, to allow the work to be more manageable or to allow for others to assist in the work. And so, you will see that. And so, for principle number one, as I said, we had three prioritized strategies broken into six activities or projects, a third of which are completed, another two-thirds of which are on track. Switching to the second principle, I'll mention that we are currently in the process of collecting more detailed information, more than just on track, completed, et cetera, especially looking at on track to find, you know, how many semesters are we talking before this comes to fruition? What's the relative timeline for work on those prioritized strategies in particular? Looking at guiding principle number two, high expectations, rigorous curriculum and effective instruction. Goals here include providing culturally appropriate targeted interventions and resources to students to ensure their academic and behavioral success. We've had many coaching visits and have refined that process to amount to twenty-three thousand classroom visits, focused on improving teaching methods. Progress has been made in this area and we've seen some of the effects in high test scores that we've noted in the last years, some of the district's highest we've seen, as well as the second highest graduation rate amongst our comparable Midwestern urban districts. Work in this area as well is progressing nicely. You will note here that there is an element not started. A lot of times, when you will note this, and I believe in this particular instance, example, there's a strategy that has not started. But, typically, there'll be issues associated with funding or things of that nature that are being worked through to ensure that that work can progress to implementation. So, not to be alarmed when you see that. We're also working to document more fully some of those holdups, if you will, so that we can ensure that we are addressing those and moving these prioritized strategies in particular towards completion. We do find that nearly two-thirds of the strategies in this area, the prioritized strategies in particular, which are twenty, are on track, with roughly a quarter approaching a third having been completed already. Moving to guiding principle number three, committed diverse and effective teachers, administrators, and staff. We have a goal here of ensuring that there is a highly effective teacher in every classroom and highly effective principal in every building. There are four, three other goals associated with this, but referencing this one in particular, we note our efforts with human resources, who are visiting numerous job fairs to. we note our efforts with human resources, who are visiting numerous job fairs to help meet our recruiting needs, and moreover, our hiring needs, to fill vacancies within our classrooms, ensuring that there is a teacher for every classroom being critically important, as well as creating new partnerships in recent years with Grambling and Iowa State Universities to assist in staff development. Again, we find priority, high strategies in this area, of which there are seven, broken into 21 activities or projects. The vast majority are on track or completed, with nearly two-thirds on track and close to a third completed, with some, in this instance, I believe it was just a few activities had not started in some of the strategies. Moving to Guiding Principle number four, equitable and efficient systems and resources. In this area, we have four goals, one of which includes enhanced efficiency and equity by administering transparent and effective resource allocation system for facilities, staff, and resources. As you well know, and as was mentioned tonight, we did pass a $421 million bond that was approved in 2014 by this board. This project, and this is data from May, and so it may need some updating, but at that time, we had 40 projects that were either completed or nearing completion, 34 underway, and eight that were in the designing phase. There's only one prioritized strategy in this area, and half of the associated activities and projects are complete, and the other half are on track with completion anticipated. Moving to Guiding Principle number five, engage and empower parents and families. This principle has three goals, an example of which is that respect for all students and families, diverse perspectives, values, and abilities and beliefs is shown. This includes, some efforts in this area include, work on our anti-discrimination policy that was updated last year, that this board reviewed and approved in 2016. Additionally, the Student Voices Council, under Mr. Lawaru's direction, was established in 2015 and maintains a 40-student membership with students representing grades nine through There are three prioritized strategies under this principle number five. They're broken into 11 different activities or projects, all of which are on track. Moving to Guiding Principle number six, involved and supportive communities and partners. Within this area, we have, two goals, one of which, as an example, is to work closely with the business community to maximize resources and opportunities for students. And we have a number of things mentioned here, our Village Zone Mentoring Program, Coats for Kids, the Book Trust Project that we are in partnership with United Ways, Scholastic, and others, as well as Project Help are all wonderful examples of work underway in this area to ensure that we are partnering with involved and supportive community partners. Only one prioritized strategy in this area, of which two activities or projects are underway and on track. And finally, moving to Guiding Principle number seven, accessible, transparent, and two-way communication. This principle has two goals, an example of which is to improve internal and external district communication with all stakeholders. Some of the efforts underway in this area include adding text messaging to our notification system and reaching out to families to get their attention to be included in that. We've received 33% of families opting in to receive texts as part of this notification system. Additionally, a social media strategy was developed to enhance two-way communication, with followers joining every day up to 5,000 as of August 2015, so certainly above that In this last of the principles, we have two prioritized strategies with two associated activities and projects, half of which are complete, and the other on track towards completion. To note how this work is approached, if you will, the strategies aren't undertaken in isolation. There are work groups associated with these strategies, where you have for a given principle or a number of principles, a work group that is cross-functional, collaborative, and seeks to create collective impact. These work groups have a member of executive council there to provide insight, as well as oversight to the work, to answer questions that may come up from those who are leading a strategy and trying to lead it to fruition. Additionally, we have a process called the Idea Summit that's interdisciplinary, of course, I can remember, interdepartmental district enhancement alliance. And these focus on high-level topics that are necessary to move forward, to allow for the completion of a number of strategies. The two topic areas that have been highlighted for work in this regard are equitable disciplinary practices, with two work teams working on one, alternatives to suspension, and another group working on cultural competence training development. We also have a group working on data use strategies, with two groups, one group working on district vision for instructional resources and their use within our classrooms. These are technology-enhanced items that allow for additional instruction to students, as well as expanding professional development time for teachers, as has been identified as a critical barrier for many strategies to move forward, as there is limited time to be with teachers and to give them the best professional development based on newly developing opportunities. Additionally, with our executive directors, they work with schools to ensure that those strategies that have been developed will work in their school and to get their perspective, as well as to problem-solve with those schools the challenges that they're facing and to help them move forward with those challenges. As I said earlier, this is somewhat of a two-part presentation. This is kind of the behind-the-scenes, ground-level view, if you will, of the strategies that are underway and the work that is being brought to fruition to ensure that we are meeting the goals of the strategic plan. Next time we come to you on this topic, we'll be able to present to you the scorecard with 16-17 results, which shows how we are progressing towards those high-level aspirational outcome goals. So with that, I will open us up to any questions you may have. Mr. Snow.
Well, first of all, I would like to thank you guys, as well as the staff that sit on these work teams, because I know you have your regular day jobs, but this is something that was added on to your plate. And just like this picture shows, it's more work for you guys. So kudos to you on doing that, and thank you for the update. I have a couple of questions that, just looking at the report, I know that my, not every board member might not want the full detail, but is there a full detail of this strategic plan of the actual, so to give you an example, like, if there's a project that's not started, is there a plan that shows why it wasn't started, or when will it start? So, you know, I don't have to bring up like 20 questions, why wasn't it started, why was it delayed?
Absolutely. It would be our hope that we could bring that back to you next time. So as I mentioned, we are asking of those strategy leads to let us know a little more information on the timeline, as well as especially on those not started, kind of what those holdups are. If we can identify common ones, that would be helpful.
And you said you guys are going to come back and give another update. So with this, as a strategic plan, I think accounted 20-something of them that were already completed, over half of them are on track. When does the board, and this is just for us, I think, when would you recommend the board to start having a discussion on, when do we start adding more things or changing the strategic plan? Because some of these things that are completed are great, and some of these things that are on track are great, but eventually, your strategic plan over time just becomes outdated. So when does the board start hashing that out? Okay, here are some things that we're doing amazing, what can we do even better?
Absolutely.
I don't know if that's a loaded question, Mr. Evans.
No, I wouldn't say it's a loaded question.
It is a loaded question, I'm sorry.
That's a good question. It is a five-year plan, so we do have that reality. So we also have the reality that many of these strategies, as you've identified, are moving to a point of implementation. Though I would argue that in many instances, a strategy is never really done, to the extent that we continue to monitor its impact and effectiveness, to make sure it still has the intended outcome. And all that being said, I think, following the five-year plan, as Mr. Evans, I believe, mentioned in his opening comments, but you had suggested that, you know, at some point you do have to come back and do another needs assessment to say, okay, we've completed this amount of work, and we have a number of strategies that have been brought to fruition and given principles of work that we feel should be impacting high-level outcomes and things of that nature. It is then a good idea to consider, especially in those areas where you haven't met all your outcomes, or you still have concerns that you're hearing about a given area, be it safe and engaged students or what have you, to identify those needs that either still remain or have developed since the first needs assessment or strategic planning process was undertaken.
And the reason why I bring that up is just, as we all know, when boards change and new board members come on, the idea that the original board came up with, it might not be the same vision. So it's just really allowing that engagement from new board members. And that's my biggest thing on there.
And I'd like to add to that, that the areas that were identified by the board and others within the district and our community, as far as prioritized strategies, were the areas that we followed very closely. And so this is why we were able to be able to pull together the response to why exactly was there success in this particular area so quickly, or why this particular area may be on hold. And as was mentioned, that could be related to personnel, it could be related to staffing, time to be able to do some of the things, like mat training is an example of that, that is time-consuming, you can't do that in a one-hour workshop. And, but we also have movement in all of the other areas that weren't prioritized. And so we paid attention to and had a process for documenting all of the prioritized strategies and meeting very regularly to ensure that they were moving forward, that the communication was happening. But we find that the other strategies within the strategic plan have been worked on as well, as each department looks at the strategic plan as their guide for the work forward. So we can begin to start looking at those other elements, so that, as you mentioned, there's a certain number of strategies that were prioritized, let's get started on the others. What we'll find is that the other ones have already started and completed in many of the categories as well. And as was mentioned, with the five-year window, at year four, as was shared with us, that's the time to start reevaluating, take a look at what's done, and then also, based on current realities, what are the things that we need to look for for that next five-year window.
Well said. Thank you.
Mrs. Godding.
So I'd kind of like to just reflect on a few things that Mr. Snow said, and kind of maybe pull it back to a higher level, which is, it wasn't the board that created the strategic plan, it was the entire community. And so we did that because we knew, as people would come and go, what we really wanted was something that the entire community and our district staff bought into. So I want to make sure that we really recognize that big picture, where there were a tremendous amount of meetings that we attended, with lots and lots of community members and lots of staff, to kind of get to the place where we got seven guiding principles, and then the goals, the measures, the strategies. So I want to make sure we recognize that. The other thing that I guess, now that we're in year four, and I know Mr. Evans and I had had this conversation before, but as Mr. Snow asked, the question about where are we really at, what I would like to see, and I know, I know, Mr. Schmidt-Bonnie knows that I'm a data-driven person, and I love that stuff, but what I would like to see is under, I would like to see the principles, the goals, the measures, and the strategies under each principle, and whether it comes in a three-ring binder, or whatever it is, and then what the, what the outcome was that we're recognizing as completed. So I love some of the things that we did, but I think it'd be helpful for the board to actually know, when we say it's completed, how do we identify that that truly is completed, so that we as board members know, so that when we're in the community, we can share, hey, this is what happened, and this is how things worked. The other thing that I think is important for us to understand is, as we said, those, you know, if there's things that are still being worked on, what is the work that's being done? So I guess I would like to see a summary document that goes back to the strategic plan and brings us that information, as well as the report card, which I know that we've talked about before, and if we've got that 16-17 data, even if we don't have all of it by November, December, if we could at least have a portion of that, I think that would be helpful. I know it's a lot of information, but I know you all have been working in work groups, and we've had lots of people trained here at the district. We had consultants that taught staff how to do the work groups, and, and then just as a, maybe a reflection back on what happened in the past, I think when we adopted the strategic plan, we said, oh my gosh, let's take on everything. We kind of bit off more than we could chew. And so there were a couple of years where we were going through saying, oh, we think these are the important things to do, and sometimes overriding what staff thought was maybe the important things to do, and then recognizing, ah, there aren't enough people here to get the work done, and we're not being very effective in how we're implementing it. So what we did was we took a step back and said, in '16, and said, hey, let's let district staff figure out what it is that we need to work on and what they can actually handle that doesn't result in a low morale because we're overworked and overburdened. And I think about just some of those, yeah, there were definitely some, some work efforts that were wonderful, wonderful concepts, came from, I think Baltimore, and Otis brought some great ideas, but then we just recognized staff didn't have the time to do all these meetings. So there's a whole lot to unpack in that. And then, I guess the other thing that I would love to see, because as Mr. Evans said, next year in '18 is the time to revisit the strategic plan, and that requires a whole bunch of going back out to the community and making sure staff is on board. But what I would love to see is, with the document that you give to us on where we're at, look at whether or not it'd be possible to get some funding to go back in and do those classroom walkthroughs, and some of those items that we did in the needs analysis to see where we've really moved forward and where in the needs analysis we haven't moved forward. Because I think, I think the critical thing here is that we did a couple of things. We did this needs analysis, which at the time was, I think, 200 classroom walkthroughs. So it was a lot of work, plus a lot of interviewing of folks, to figure out what are the needs in this district, and then from the needs analysis, we built the strategic plan. So if you haven't read the needs analysis, I would strongly encourage you to do that as new board members, as well as the strategic plan, because there's a lot of great information there. But I think it would also be really helpful to say, okay, we did that needs analysis, now let's go back, let's take a look at what we say we've gotten done and accomplished, let's take a look at doing some walkthroughs, and make sure that we're really have accomplished what we think we have. And we can see some of that through data, right? We know that we've had some great data changes, we know that we've saved money in areas where we knew we needed to save money. So anyway, I guess I just want to reflect back on that, having spent gazillions of hours going through that process the first time, and recognizing that visionary thinking that has to take place, and that, that focus on the future and where we want our students to end up, and not being caught up in the minutia of how we get there, but letting staff figure out how we get there, but we as a board continuing to monitor that progress. And so that's why, I guess, I ask for a document that would just kind of show us where we're at, and then allow us that planning phase for next year.
And is that something that could be done with the scorecard, that will be brought back once we have all of the data for that?
We will endeavor to make that our goal. I believe so. It shouldn't be challenging. We do have, and I must thank our colleagues in IMS, they provided a solution through SharePoint for us to capture and track much of this data. So through their staff, we will be able to capture that information and present it to you in the format you've described.
And we'd like to add to being able to get those other strategies in place, that we haven't walked through that SharePoint process, but using the same method to gather the status of those. So this way, we're getting the view of everything, not just the prioritized strategies.
Thank you so much. That's perfect.
Mr. Crowman.
Well, first, thank you for this update. But in the nine months that I've been on the board, this is the first real in-depth look I've had as an update on the strategic plan. Do you know when the last time the presentation was done with the board, as far as the strategic plan?
I believe, though, we'd have to check the record. If I'm not mistaken, it was the scorecard discussion, it was November, if I remember as November, December timeframe last year, which is when we would contemplate with board leadership and Mr. Evans' approval, coming back to discuss the current or 16-17 scorecard.
Okay. And when, do you have any estimate of when we might be able to see a scorecard update?
We would look for that same timeframe, so around November, December. A lot of it is somewhat in flux, just relative to state assessment results. There are some changes in our state assessments, as you know, be it the ACT at 11th grade, or in our state assessments, as you know, be it the ACT at 11th grade, or those changes to the ELA assessment that have delayed us getting results. We should have had them by now typically, and they've been delayed till later in September, as of this point. I believe it's the third delay, so we'll see. But yeah, we should still be on that same timeframe.
Okay. And you mentioned that there's a constant evaluation of all the, the goals within the strategic plan. Can you just, as a new board member, can you tell me how that's done, and what changes are made, if there needs to be?
Sure. I believe you're talking about the objective level measurement. And that is, once a strategy comes to fruition or implementation, those things attached to it, those measurement opportunities to ensure that it is having its intended outcome, to allow for adjustment in implementation if they find problems.
Okay. And what would, what would be the best way, if we have, as a board member, particular, specific questions about one area or another in the strategic plan? And what, what, one area that I was thinking about is the diversity of the teachers in the classroom. And I sent an email out earlier in the week, but I don't think that at a board meeting, we need to go through each, every, you know, part of the strategic plan. But how would you recommend if we have some questions about a particular area such as that?
Sure. I guess I would suggest, if you could send your questions to Mr. Ray, he can funnel them to us, and we'd be happy to work with Mr. Evans to get those answers.
Okay. All right. I'll do that. You know, like I said, I did send out an email, and I am interested in what's being done to increase the diversity within the classroom. It looks like since this strategic plan has been implemented, there's been no increase in the diversity of teachers in our classroom. And I think that's a primary objective within the strategic plan. And I guess one other question I would ask of Mr. Snow and Ms. Merrick is, if there'd be any consideration to having the board just discuss, you know, maybe on an annual basis, of what its vision is, and, and just kind of maybe a reassessment as we view the strategic plan, and where we'd like to head over the, in the future.
And I would say that is something generally, I think, most, most other boards do. They usually have towards the beginning of the year, like a type of board retreat, where they get to talk about goals and priorities for the year. Aside from our strategic plan discussions, that's not really something that boards in our district have done. So I think that I agree that is something that we need to start doing moving forward, and using data to guide. You know, maybe it's not a January to December discussion, it might be a school year discussion, since most of our plans run on a school year basis. And I think I did see an email come out today with the diversity information. I think Mr. Ray, was that sent to the full board? Did you have anything on that, Mr. Evans?
No, just, just a comment that, one, I think that's a great idea. Whenever there's a specific item that you have a question on, we can provide that information, we're happy to do that. I also think, having time, even a workshop at some juncture where you go further in detail, I think is good as well. Because the truth is, there are so many strategies. We don't have time to always talk about, for example, I'll stay with your example, the pair-to-teacher program, which has been one of our successful programs in increasing our teacher diversity. And actually, teacher diversity has gone up some, not nearly what we want it to do, but it's actually more diverse today than it was in 2014, in our administrative ranks, or more diverse today than they were in 2014. But still not enough. But we can talk about those in a workshop setting, about what's the pair-to-teacher program doing, what are we doing in recruitment strategies, have we used recruitment firms, and have they successfully been able to hire principals, for example, that increase diversity? And the answer to that is yes, but if I had more time, I could go into some of the detail of how that's worked, as well as what we've done at recruitment at colleges, but also talk about some of the challenges, because it is, it is very difficult when you're looking at, in that particular instance, a limited pool. But it's still a great conversation to have, and talk about what strategies are we doing, which ones are giving us a high return. But all of that could be part of a workshop session, but I also wouldn't, I certainly wouldn't discourage, if you have a specific area that you have an interest in, maybe it's safety. What have we done with safety? I see safety is one of your principal strategies. What have you done with safety? The list is pretty long, and we could talk about key cards, like what Sharif has, that now we're putting in on all of our doors as a part of the, the bond issue that is changing everything. From safe rooms that now will be tornado-proof in all of our schools because of the bond issue, from cameras that we're adding throughout the district, from common citizens, citizens, digital, digital safety that we heard tonight. All of those are pieces and parts, but there's so much. You can see that it takes a long time. I can rattle off, off the top of my head on multiple topics, but I can't remember everything we're doing. But we do have all of those pieces and parts we can put together, but it's, it's pretty lengthy. But it's a great conversation, because it's about, so what are we trying, what things are having success, what are other things we can build on? It's, it's an absolute great conversation, and the needs analysis, and a review of that, prior to kind of a revamp, that I think, my personal opinion, next year, that needs to occur, is a whole, full reflection activity, and probably some community engagement, because that did, as Ms. Godding said, that came from a massive community engagement activity, too, that was funded by some, three-fourths of it were paid by grants, and then the district paid 25 percent, so we'd have something kind of skin in the game. But it was, it was an intensive study that required a lot of hours, that was supported by, three-fourths of it by external dollars. So thank you for that question.
Ms. Williams.
First, I would ask board leadership to set some time apart to thoroughly go over the strategic plan with the new board members, so that they understand that. And then also, and I know years past, Mrs. Godding made sure that in the summer, we had a workshop about strategic plan, and so making sure that we're just following that timeline, especially as we're getting closer to the point we need to have more conversations about what's the next steps after this five-year is done. I think those are important conversations to begin to have, not just at this board table, but with our community also. And then on the diversity piece, I will say, working in schools, although it may not reflect in the numbers, the visual when you walk into the schools, and if you're familiar with the schools that you represent, you will notice that there has been much more diversity in classrooms, teaching students. But we've also had quite a few of staff, tenured staff retire, and, and/or some have left the district because of, you know, a family move, or other, you know, medical issues. And so although this specific data piece may not reflect the diversity that we've had, there has been quite a bit of increase in diversity going into the schools, reflecting more of our student population. I wanted to address strategy number five, and specifically with Mr. Luaru being here, talking about the Voices Council. And again, asking board leadership, this is something that I pressed Mr. Evans about a lot, because at national conferences, you have other boards that have a student representative sitting at the board table, although they're not a voting member, they are there representing their student body. And so this was all our, our, excuse me, alternative. But I would really like to see Mr. Evans, Mr. Luaru, working with board leadership to provide more regular and more consistent input from our students. It's great that they're looking at policies and are having discussions, but I want to actually see them here, if it's once a quarter, to give us their take on the things that we're talking about, because this thing isn't effective if the board members aren't listening. Part of that strategy was to make sure that we're having conversations with them. Again, it's great that they're having conversation with staff and each other, and taking that back to the building, but that doesn't provide us as board members, direct input from the students that we are educating, and they should have a voice in their education. And so again, I'm asking board leadership and Mr. Evans to work with Mr. Luaru, to make sure that happens. Again, this is their education, and they should have a voice at this table, and this is the opportunity that we've provided them as well. And so I would really like to see that happen, and I will press that issue. Secondly, on strategy number six, I'm talking about involved community partners. Although it's a very small snapshot, we have so many community partners that are stepping up, and really aligning with the district. I will give, take a professional point, and such as Partnership for Kids, where we've really looked at, we serve only Omaha Public Schools, and as, as a community organization, how are we aligning? How are we falling in line with strategic plan? And so I still believe, at some point, and I know I was kind of, I won't say shut down, but it was something to look forward towards the future, but I would really also like to see some of those community partners have a voice at the table, at least to inform all of us what they're doing, because it's, it's great to look at a sheet, and a line-by-line, but it would also be nice for those community partners to be able to come and talk about the great work that they're doing with the district, not just at award level, but some of the day-to-day organizations that are in our buildings every day, helping not only our students and families, but they're also supporting our staff in ways that we at this table really don't have the opportunity to see. And so again, that's something else that I would like to see integrated into a board meeting. I don't know how. Again, I leave that to board leadership, but that is something for me that I've been very pressing about. You know, we give credit to the larger community organizations, but a lot of the smallers that are making, you know, direct impact, one-on-one, in a student or family's lives, should also be here and, and get, get the recognition that they so deserve, and how they're helping our families. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Any other, Mr. Scanlon?
Thank you. I guess, obviously, this, it's great to be back up at a higher level of governance for being at the strategic plan level. I just had a couple of questions, and like to get some more information. On the guiding principle number two and three, it said we had 23,000 classroom visits. Could somebody expand upon who made those visits, and what they consisted of?
We developed a device, or a software on a tablet device, that we use for our principals and teacher leaders, that they go out and do what we call coaching visits, and they're all tallied by school and by district. I think we've had a couple of demos here at the board table, where Mr. Dixon, I believe, has, has done a demo, and it's, it's pretty impressive, because we can share with you what they're seeing district-wide, we can break it down school by school. But it's a tool that we developed in conjunction with Microsoft, and so it's really a great tool. So that's how we know how many visits are made, is simply by looking at the tool that's on a tablet that each of our principal has, that the leadership team has, assistant principals might have, teacher leaders might have. And something, really, we've only had, maybe it's two and a half years that we put that in their hands, but it's really a critical tool, because then what happens is, the principal or the assistant principal or the teacher leader comes back to a faculty meeting and says, this is what I observed in our building over the last two months, here was, here was the level of student engagement, here was the level of higher-order thinking skills, questions that were in your classrooms. It's multiple areas, and we could certainly do another presentation on that. That is one of our key, key components. The research is quite clear, if we're in classrooms, with our leadership in our buildings, and even our leadership external to buildings, it will impact the quality of instruction. So I'm glad you pulled that out, because it's just one little bubble, but that one little bubble reflects one of the most important things that we do every day, and one of the things we've really focused on. And I know, in the back of this room, you've got some executive directors and your chief academic officer, I'm pretty sure they'd shake their head and say amen, if they had a mic in front of them, and say that this is a critical piece. When they go out to schools, they look at that, and they talk to the schools about it. So you actually pulled out one of the most critical pieces, that gives you a real clear example of how well relationship building's happening in that class, how well culture and climate is in that class, as well as instructional strategy. So I appreciate you pulling that out, and that's one, I think, is a great topic for, not just a workshop, but, but something else, too, because it's, it's really the rubber meeting the road. What actually happens in Mrs. Smith's classroom? Because a lot of things we talk about, we don't know sometimes the level of implementation. Does it actually impact student behavior, and does it impact support, support and impact teacher behavior? That item does, because that reflects feet and eyes in a classroom, knowing what they're looking for, and then providing coaching and feedback that impacts how young people have success. So I'm glad you pulled that one out. I get pretty excited about that particular bubble, so I don't know if you knew that or not.
Well, I'm just glad to hear that, because that's, that's where we're going to make the biggest impact, I think, as a school district, is in the classroom. And I think that needs to be emphasized, and, and put under the microscope, and I think we've made great strides with that. And then could I ask, before I ask my next question, Charles Wakefield and Monique Farmer to come up, because I've got questions for those guiding principles. But the next guiding principle that I have, kind of falls into number six and number one. I was able to go out and, and visit the Fort Omaha campus with Metro Community College, and I've been a big proponent of, of, just, you know, skilled labor, and North Omaha Community College, or I'm sorry, Metro Community College with Fort Omaha Campus, and also Metro Community College on the South Omaha campus, has been making great strides to increase their offerings. And I know we've had conversations, previous board, and I don't know if we've had it yet in this board, but of a technical high school. I still would like to see that community partnership work, to where we can better offer our students facilities with Metro Community College. And that would be with the number one, or I'm sorry, number two guiding principle of, I believe it was, we had a lot more, 535, sorry for not having it. Number one, okay, yep, with the Career Center, 575 industry-recognized certifications. I think we can do probably even better with the new facilities that are offered at the Fort Omaha campus, and also the renovations that are going on at the South Omaha Metro Community College campus. And those are actually closer to North High and South High. So I'd really like to see that pushed before we have to potentially consider a, a technical high school. And then that also goes with number six, just partnering with our community, with our community assets and partners. The reason I asked Charles to come up, guiding principle number three, many times when we have people that will question our desire to become more diverse, I guess it's, it's noted up, they're committed, diverse, and effective teachers, and administrators and staff. Have we diluted any of our hiring practices, or our qualifications, in order to gain the diversity that we would like to see?
Of course not. Our, our top priority is always a highly qualified teacher. Diversity is a tough one for us. In the state of Nebraska in 2016, there were less than 500 diverse students enrolled in teacher education programs. The national average is 14 percent of teacher education programs are diverse students. So just recruiting diverse students is very difficult. One of the reasons we attend 75 job fairs is we go where the students are, Texas, Louisiana, except Illinois, to recruit those students. Diversity is a problem across the board. I served on a panel presentation for the state of Nebraska earlier this summer, talking about this very thing. One of the things that we continue to talk about the state of Nebraska for, and I'll put a plug in here, is alternative certification. Forty-six percent of graduates coming out of alternative certification programs are diverse candidates, as compared to year 15. And while there's always concerns with alternative certification, at some point, we need to start looking at things like that, so we can address some of the diversity issues we see.
Thank you. And then, Monique, the next one is for you. When do you think your communication plan's going to end?
We have a district communication strategy that we actually update every year. We had a few team offsites that we worked on this past summer to map out where we're going to focus our energy from a prioritization standpoint. We took into account some of the insights that came out of the communication audit. We took into account what the superintendent told us his priorities are for the school year. So I think the short answer is, it doesn't. It's ongoing. We update it to reflect what our current priorities are at the time.
Well, and I guess I just ask that to ensure that, I guess,
Well, I guess I just ask that to ensure that, I guess, with the board and the strategic plan, that communication is always a part of it. I mean, that we get beat up left and right a number of times for not communicating effectively. And I would like to say that I think it's improved since we've taken steps to add internal communication, external communication, and that I think is a huge part. Because if you don't hear about it and if you're not actively doing it, people aren't going to hear about our message and they're going to pile up on you when things are going wrong if you're not talking. So I appreciate the things that you've done and I would, again, encourage the board to just never let that communication piece not be a part of the strategic plan.
I agree 100%. Appreciate that.
And I did just want to jump in. I think we hadn't been talking about like a specific technical high school. We talked about some like Career Center-type expansions and possibly a new Career Center with Metro, which is something that we need to bring back up, whether we discuss it as part of a second bond or as future efforts. And it may benefit us to have people make a trip down to Lincoln because Lincoln Public Schools recently opened a Career Center with Southeast Community College where it's set up that's on their campus and students go there for part of their day to take those related classes. One thing I wanted to say on the industry certifications, I honestly don't know if there's even a way for us to track this, but it would be really interesting to see how the difference between earned by their senior year and earned the year after their senior year. And the reason I say that is because I know a lot of those certifications require you to be 18 and not all of our students are 18 when they graduate. And so like I know at Bryan High, if you're in the TDL program, you can graduate with a forklift certification. You have to be 18. So if you're 17 and you graduate, you can't graduate with a certification. But they let the students come back and finish their testing and things to get the certification, say if they turn 18 over the summer. So it would be interesting to see if there's a difference between the two because I know we do have a lot of kids that graduate before they turn 18.
I could just mention towards that, we've been in constant contact on this topic with Mr. Ken Spellman and are continuing to refine our techniques to make sure that we're capturing this, to ensure that we know how much more effort we need to put into it and that we are truly documenting all those great successes.
Well, I just wanted, I just wanted to point out that Mr. Evans might get excited about that bubble, but I get very excited about that 23,000 bubble of classroom visit bubble as well. And so if, for the new board members, I would really encourage you to sit down with, I don't know, one of the EDs or something and take a look at that software. We were actually the beta site in the United States for the Microsoft development of that. So when I'm out talking to folks, I have a little short list of things that I think are the hype things for the district. And that happens to be one of them I talk about quite frequently and parents and others are completely blown away when you walk them through not only the cost savings that we had by developing that, but that we were the beta site in the United States and only the alpha site was Florida State, I believe. And so we were truly the only K-12 public education site that helped develop that and that product is now being distributed across the United States. So I think it's pretty impressive that Omaha Public Schools was the leader on that. And I would encourage you to take a look at the product if you get a chance because it's pretty impressive.
Mr. Snow?
I think that today's feedback from the board was, was, was great. I, again, echo Ms. Gadding, Gadding's comments, Mr. Perlman, Ms. Williams. With this plan, with this presentation, what I would continue to push on is I think you guys need to give us as much information as possible. Because when we are out in the community, whether we're new board members or board members that have been around for five years, people are going to push us on, how do you know that's true? And it's something that has to be drilled down. So if it is, you know, we went to 75 job fairs, is that breaking it down? What job fairs? Where were they? I mean, to be honest with you, because, you know, at the end of the day, someone's going to say, you know, we didn't hit that goal because we just went to the job fair down the street. And if you didn't come up and explain Texas and Florida, Illinois, people at the table wouldn't understand. So I think it's something that is the responsibility of the district to give us as much of that information as possible. Because at the end of the day, it is, I mean, this is the strategic plan and we need to make sure that even if there, if new board members that weren't on here when it got created, they need to buy into this plan as well. And the only way they're going to buy into this plan is by getting as much information as possible, whether we started it or not. And that's just my advice. Good luck and thank you.
All right. And I do believe there was a copy of the full plan as far as goals, strategy and objectives that was emailed out to the full board. When was that, Mr. Ray?
It's been a while. It's also available on our website that I can send.
Yes. And it's also on the website. And then as Mr. Schmidt, as Mr. Schmidt-Bonney said, they will work on getting us that full plan with the detailed data so we can have that when we go over the scorecard. As soon as we get information from the state, they decide to release data this year. All right. Under Recita Reports, I do want to draw your attention, there is a report on the social work program and the expansion that they've undergone over the past year. So please take a look at that as you are able to. And Mr. Snow?
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board and legal counsel, negotiations and public pending litigation. Sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Snow and a second by Ms. Williams. Roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Merrick?
Aye.
Perlman?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow? Williams?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Gadding?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Motion passes. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board and legal counsel, negotiations and pending litigation. Let the record reflect the board went into closed session at 8:42 PM.